It is 6:00 PM. I will call the July 23rd, 2024, meeting of the With County Board of Supervisors to order this evening, we have Pastor Rusty Crigger, Brother Retreat Pentecostal Holiness Church, to provide the invocation. If you would, please stand and remain standing for the pledge.
Just want to say thank you all, each one of you, for your commitment and service to our community. That being said, let's pray. Father, we just come to you today, and we thank you. For this gift of life that you have given us, most importantly, the gift of salvation through your Son, Jesus Christ, we thank you. We praise you, thank you for your many blessings upon us, two million accounts, so richly blessed. Father, we thank you for that. Lord, I just ask your hand upon each of these members tonight. Lord, I pray for wisdom, knowledge, and understanding in all the decisions which they make. I pray that each one of them finds somewhere within themselves to put you first, and also to put the people of this community before any situation or circumstances of what they decide. That's best for everyone. Father, we thank you, we praise you, for being with us. We just ask that in Jesus' precious name, it's heaven.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, as always, the first item on our agenda is Citizens Time. We did not have anybody signed up for Citizens Time, so we'll move on to our public hearings. The first one is our FY 25 carryover request, and Mr. Behr. I found it, I'll read it. Okay. "Notice is hereby given pursuant to Section 15.2-2507 of the Code of Virginia, and amendments thereto, that the With County Board of Supervisors intends to consider an amendment to increase the FY 2025 budget for carryover projects from the FY 2024 as follows."
I would just go to the total, Mr. Chairman.
And the total is forty-six million, five-hundred-and-six-thousand, eight-hundred-and-twelve dollars. A public hearing is scheduled for Tuesday, July 23rd, 2024, at 6:00 PM, or as soon as practical thereafter, in the boardroom of the County Administration Building, 340 South Sixth Street, Withfield, Virginia, to hear public comments on the proposed budget amendment. And I will open the public hearing for that one, and again, we don't have anyone signed up to speak, so I will close the public hearing on that one. We do have a request from Mr. Behr that the board approve the amendment and appropriate forty-six million, one-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand, one-hundred-and-twelve dollars in carryover funds from fiscal year 2024 for fiscal year 2025, and I'll open the floor up for any motions. All right, have a motion by Mr. Cook. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Is there any questions and/or discussion on the motion? All right, hearing done, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry, I'll begin with you.
Aye.
Uh, aye.
Aye.
So approved. Moving into our next public hearing, increase in, proposed increase in wastewater rates. The With County Board of Supervisors will hold a public hearing to give citizens served by the With County wastewater system an opportunity to comment on a proposed rate increase. In accordance, in accordance with the Code of Virginia, Section 15.2-2119, and subsequent revisions, the With County Board of Supervisors proposes to change the rates charged for wastewater as follows. The residential rates, the base rate, first three thousand gallons would go from twenty-two dollars a month to twenty-four-twenty. Above the base rate per thousand gallons would go from six dollars and ninety cents to seven fifty-nine. On the commercial side, the base rate would be for the first four thousand gallons, fifty-five, fifty-five dollars is the current rate, would increase to sixty dollars and fifty cents, and above that base rate per thousand gallons would go from eight eighty-five to nine seventy-four. The public hearing will be conducted on Tuesday, July 23rd, 2024, beginning at or about 6:00 PM, and may be continued if necessary. Public hearing will be held in the boardroom of the County Administration Building, 340 South Sixth Street, Withfield, Virginia. Again, we do not have anyone signed up to make public comments, so I will close the public hearing. And again, we do have a memo from Mr. Behr requesting that the board approve the wastewater rates as advertised. I will open the floor up for any motions. Have a motion by Mr. Morgan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Cook. Is there any questions and/or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I do have some clarification. Mr. Behr, commercial water rates, does that include progress part?
No, it does not include progress part. They are under the enterprise's rates.
Thank you, sir.
All right, does anybody else have any questions? Hearing done, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Behr?
Aye.
So approved. Next item on our agenda is payment of invoices. Each board member has received in their package a copy of the invoices that need to be paid. I'll entertain a motion to pay the invoices.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith, a second by Mr. Terry. Are there any questions, discussion, or invoice that any board member wants to pull out? Hearing done, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
So, so approved. Next item on our agenda is the minutes of our previous meeting from July 9th, 2024. I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes. Have a motion by Mr. Cook. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Is there any corrections or additions to the minutes as presented? Hearing none, all there's a favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Moving on to old business, we have the Fort Chisel Library Agreement. Mr. Behr, I believe that may be you.
Yeah, you all previously had approved an operating agreement. I handed out this copy to you. The attorney for the With Grayson Regional Library had some markups to it. The red are his changes and markups, and I've given that to you so you can see the changes. Mr. Fawley and I have reviewed it. There are no substantial changes that have any impact. However, I do know that you all are just seeing this. I have contacted Mr. Smith and Mr. Morgan about trying to schedule a meeting with the Friends of the Fort Chisel Library, the Director of the With Grayson Regional Library, the individual who would be the manager of the library, and also Stephanie Davis, who's from the Fort Chisel area, that's one of our members on board, to try to have a meeting because there's still a lot of items floating out there between the Friends of Fort Chisel Library and the library that they want to get lined up. I'm fine if you all want to go ahead and approve this tonight, if you all want to look at it and take action on the next meeting, that's fine as well. We would like to get this up and operational as soon as possible, but they still have not executed a great lease agreement between the library and the Friends of the library yet, so. But, but the changes here do not make any substantial changes to what you approved before. Father, then I'll let you.
I would defer back to Mr. Smith or Mr. Morgan because it sounds like they've had more discussion. We can either take action on it, or we could leave it on their own business till you all have a chance to.
I think we need to leave it on their own business as well. Give us time to review these changes and plus hope to have a meeting.
I, I think that is best as well.
Does anybody have an issue with that?
No, sir.
All right. Anything else under old business, Mr. Behr?
I do not have anything else, no, sir.
Mr. Hankins, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Move on to reports. We have a treasurer. I do not see Ms. Gwynn. The Commissioner, Mr. Lankis, you have anything, sir?
Good to see you, sir. I just wanted to give an update in the Commissioner's office this year with the books, the tax bill in season that reams. I think the board and administration will be very pleased with the increase in revenue that you will see for 2024. Just from the staff changes, training, our interaction with other localities, and implementing some proper practices in multiple areas of everything that we assess, it's looking like there's a substantial amount more in every category this time. There are a few areas that I am not pleased with. Already this week, our staff have, and myself, this was Tuesday, have individually hand priced three thousand vehicles. Of the over seven thousand that the J.D. Taylor Pricing Program through Tyler Munus will not price. We had to make this decision due to time constraints, as I am five weeks away from the deadline that the tax books have to be done. And between the IT departments on our side and Tyler Munus, just one question, you can have a week delay in a response. So we had to say, we're going to do this the nineteen-eighty-seven way, or do it by hand just for time constraints. On the real estate side, we have been in our standstill due to the same issues we've had the last several years. With the real estate assessments files being transferred into Tyler Munus for Vision, the response time on these issues to me are unacceptable. And it's the same issues that we've had the last several years. Before taking office, I asked administration for a specific form of help or a specific capacity from IT that I believe would solve some of the issues which were denied. I asked again in January, to no avail. And so for the third year in a row, we're dealing with the same issues and now we do. Ms. Gwynn and I were asked earlier in the year about billing personal property earlier, and my response then was, you know, let's get back on track for a normal billing cycle before we talk about changing a future billing cycle. And my conclusion is, right now, that no matter how good, smart, educated, experienced you or your staff are, as long as we're at the mercy of other departments, people with, with the software we're using, that we may always be late on either, either cycle, personal property. For real estate, this week in last especially, I keep hearing the Albert and Ida Southwood, the definition of insanity, doing the same thing over and over again, expecting a different result. I believe that the personal property book will be on time, but right now, I really have my doubts about making real estate.
Seems like you have any questions for Mr. Lankis?
I'm actually just, not a question for Mr. Lankis, it's more toward Mr. Behr. I know that we talked about these issues for the past several years. And it seems like communication between us and Tyler, or us and Vision, whoever it is, or both, has been an issue. So, you know, we, we communicated to the citizens of With County that there wouldn't be no more delays, and we all agree that we can't afford that anymore. You know, I know Lori was caught the run of that over the last couple of years. But if this, if this issue continues, I don't understand how we can't get somebody from Tyler here to solve these issues. I mean, we're a paying customer. We, we bought that, correct?
Correct, yes, sir.
Are we still paying for services for that?
Yes, sir.
So we, we need to start looking. At this point, my, my opinion is, we need to start looking for a replacement system for this, if they're not more supportive of the system.
Yeah.
Because we can't continue down the trail. Over and over and over, we keep doing the same things. And I know that Mr. Lankis just quoted Einstein, but if we're keep talking about it, nothing's changing. So something has to change. So we, we need to start actively looking to see if we can get a, a different system, because we can't continue this. I mean, there's people, you got, even if you're not on a fixed income, I'm not even gonna say that. Everybody in this county deserves to know when their taxes is going to be paid. And these folks are, they're going to take the block from the citizens as well as we will. You know, like, what's the delay? What, what's the issues this year? So that, that develops a lack of trust in us, and them to do their job, and we, we've got to solve that problem. So I would just ask, again, this is my opinion, that we look at a replacement system.
And to echo what Mr. Smith said, if there's certain staff that, that, that have a specific skill set that, that meshes better than with the Tyler IT people than others, we need to get that person assigned to take care of those problems. And I'm going to say this as, as nice as I humanly can. I agree with Mr. Smith. I'm sick of having a discussion about Tyler Munus. If these taxes do not go out on time this year, I'm going to absolutely lose my mind. And I will start making all types of motions from this seat, which I normally try and opt to do. But this is ridiculous, and it's the same complaints, communication. We've had two different commissioners who've had the same complaints. We've heard from Ms. Gwynn, the same complaints. You know, it takes a week to get some, that is ridiculous. You know, I appreciate you, what you've said about making changes and making sure people, I, I've said this for years. I don't like to pay taxes, but I pay my fair share. My only thing is, I want to make sure everybody else is paying their fair share. So I appreciate the work you do. We will absolutely use that increased revenue that he talked about to completely buy a new system, if I have anything to do with it. There's.
Understood, and, and communication is key. This is the first I have heard of this from Mr. Lankis.
No, it's not. Let me stop you, Mr. Behr. You've heard the same thing. I'm the chairman, I have the floor, Mr. Behr. How embarrassing would it be if I had to gavel you out of order? You have absolutely heard the same complaints that I've heard and Ms. Lawson have heard since we've sat on this board.
Leave me out of this one, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, sir.
What I was saying is, I have not, yes, I heard at the beginning of the year, the concerns. I set up IT department to work with them. They set up a mock thing for a couple days to do a mock real estate grant, ran into problems. They came back, I don't know, three weeks later, two more days, set up, did some mock runs, ran into some insane issues. We're working with Vision, we're working with Tyler to correct those issues. I think they had another one two weeks ago. Was that when you all met? I don't remember the timeframe. You know, I will say, I had not heard from my IT department of these concerns. I had not heard from Mr. Lankis of those ones. To let you all know, there has been a process of trying to work through mock trials to take care of these problems now instead of later. I will certainly work with Mr. Lankis, I'll work for IT staff. I don't care how many of our IT staff have got to work on this. That has been the goal, and that has been what we have been working on. And Mr. Lankis come to me and said this, I certainly would have set up other meetings with them to find out. So I am like you. This is not acceptable. We did not plan on having the taxes late this year. I will meet with them, I'll meet with IT staff. We will look at whatever it takes for us to make certain that we are responding as quickly as we need to, and pushing Tyler Munus to respond. You know, and we can also go ahead and start preparing requests for proposals to go out to look at a new tax system to come in. I know Ms. Gwynn has, has talked about that. We have talked to some other localities about that. The only reason we haven't done that already was, we were trying to see if Mr. Lankis's knowledge and involvement and working more closely with IT would keep us from bending the situation. This is the first I've heard of it. We'll certainly look into it and see what we can do.
Does anybody else have any more questions for Mr. Lankis for any discussion? You said that you'd asked for some help and hadn't got it. What are you referring to?
In December, and then again in January, I specifically asked or requested for a specific IT person. This, this would be their priority. Because, I mean, we started working on this maybe end of April or May with the test runs. We still don't even have an answer as, as to why. And I'm not putting down or being negative about any other individual in any department, but what I'm saying is, we need a person that this is their priority, as long as we have the system until it's done.
Mr. Lankis, what was the, I'm sorry, Mr. Lankis.
Is there an issue with that?
What we have done is, is Mr. Katrin has taken lead on this in the process. There is no problem with any of our IT staff working in the process of, of helping in what is going. The one individual he's talked about was working on another project when we started doing this, because we were implementing the, the building inspection, and he was working on that project with Tyler Munus at the same time. So there's, there's not any problem, any of them, all three of them, that others should be able to work on any of the projects at any time.
But they're not.
Mr. Katrin has been, and, and I was not aware that there was any delay in any of our response of any of our thing. The only thing I had heard was getting the responsibility from Tyler and Vision was the problem that we had. And so when he mentioned that tonight, that's the first I've heard of any delays coming from our side.
But in my opinion, at this point in time, if there's an issue, and he says this is what's going to fix it, we need to give him the guy to fix it.
Yep. It's all hands on deck, that's completely.
Mr. Lankis?
I'm done. I'm, I'm done.
Mr. Lankis, when was the last time somebody from IT was working on this?
I think we had an email response last week. Of course, right now, we're just waiting on Halloween. I sent my last response on Friday, but it's Tuesday, and I've not heard any comments. But when you're dealing with the five-week deadline, one week responses to me are unacceptable for anybody. I will say, Vision has been wonderful. It is the Tyler Munus side. Then on my end is, is the issue. And like I said, it's not about like an individual so much IT, but Mr. Katrin does IT for the entire complex. My request was more centered around, I need somebody that, that solely handles this. That, that is my answer to this. When you have somebody on staff that gets it and can write those programs on their day off, let them solely learn this and work on this. And I, I think you could use Tyler Munus for a long time. But the counties I find that are successful, localities, cities that count, that are successful with Tyler Munus, their IT is heavily involved. And so when we come to these issues, I think that, that I need, we need, I think Lori would even agree, that we have an IT person, that this is all they're doing in this season, and this is all they deal with. Maybe that's not how it works or can work, but I, I think for the time we're in, because like we've talked before, a new system is probably two years out if we found it tomorrow. So, but again, next year, I'll have the same.
So I think, I think from my standpoint, and I can't speak for everybody on board, I think Bill Boe is too greedy. And I, and I heard Mr. Behr say it all hands on deck, but I think this is something we need to do on that basis.
Well, and, and just a clarification. I assume, once we get the bugs worked out of the system, so to speak, that this shouldn't be a reoccurring issue. Because my frustration, well, there, there's always, because you're going to have updates and stuff.
Yeah.
My frustration is that we've had this system for how many years? And it seems like we've never, now I know there was a big update two years ago. But it seems like we have never got the bugs worked out of the system to where Lori could use it, or Kathy before you could use it. So if we have to assign an IT person to that hallway between your and Lori's office to, to work out the bugs, and at least try to get it to work efficiently, one tax bill in a season, is my, is my frustration, because I don't think we've ever done, no, we haven't.
And, and one thing we have done is, is, and we've used Ms. Shelton. Ms. Shelton had good knowledge of the system before. We've, like, Ms. Shelton has, has gone in, we, we're not keeping any resources from being used in the process. But we'll make certain that ample resources are going to this. The, you know, the updates create the biggest challenge, and that's, that's a problem we have across, oh, makes this system. You know, fortunately, we haven't had like crowd strike this week, we haven't had that kind of update. But basically, some updates, you got to go in and fix the bugs and go with it. The, the reports that I have gotten back, the, the communication and the effort from the Commissioner of Revenue's staff, and knowledge from their staff, relaying back, and especially trying to take care of these vision problems, has been the best we've had. There is an understanding of the data that's in Vision, and the data that you're trying to get in Tyler Munus, where it's going, what's creating the problems. I think they have gone back and fixed some of the things, or addressed some of the things on their side. There's been a lot of work on that, so there's progress been made, but was not aware that it was this critical, that, that it was not improving along those lines. But I will be talking to staff tomorrow, working with Mr. Lankis to make certain we've got everybody working on this. And we'll, we'll call the, the people we deal with directly with Tyler Munus and say, you know, we're having the same problem with support system, and get, and try to speed up the process from there.
Yeah, and hopefully just keep us updated on the project.
I will add, and I mentioned earlier, we are a partner, yeah, that we have been the previous two years. And I really do think personal property can be on time. And I realize that it could, but right now, with five weeks left, I don't, I don't hope for that.
I appreciate all the hard work you all put in this week especially. That's a lot.
My staff has blown their way, like, a little emotional, that they were willing to stop after, and I said, absolutely.
Mr. Terry, I'm sorry, I, I kind of cut you off.
No, it's fine. I was just, I agree with what Mr. Smith and what the, what the chairman had to say. This is, it's not fair to Adam, it's not fair to Lori, it's not fair to us. I mean, we're at the mercy of that group, and we pay way too much money to put up this kind of crap. And what I understood you to say, Mr. Lankis, just wanted to clarify. You're waiting for Tyler to figure something out from back in May? Is that what you said? Did I understand that correctly? So we're looking at two months to get an answer from a company. That is not acceptable. What would happen if we had to deal with them for too much? Just out of curiosity, they're going to shut us off, right? I mean, it's, it's out of hand. This has been, this is the same thing since I've been on the board. It's, obviously, it's not Lori's fault, it's not Adam's fault. At some point in time, it's time to make a motion to start looking for a new, a new software company. This is not acceptable. It's not getting any better. It's the same thing with the last year, no improvement still. I mean, I think it's time to make a motion, because he says it's going to take two years to find a system. It's not getting any better, it's the same thing with the last year, no improvement still, I mean, I think it's time to make a motion, because he says it's going to take two years to find a system. But I mean, this, this is not acceptable, two months to get an answer, that, that should never happen. And if you need, I'm just gonna say the name, I think you need to have requested Josh grab. Do you feel like Adam, do you feel like he's got the knowledge and the background to do what needs to be done?
I do, um, he's proven in the other years, not. In my previous time with accounting.
Yes, sir.
Uh, he came on the end of that and is. I don't want to have to say that politically correct, but he gets it. And he can solve something if I have access to it. That other people cannot solve, or it's a three day process, I can get it done. And just for efficiency sake, from my end, it is just a level of frustration. Knowing that there is somebody in the complex that probably can fix this now, but I have to wait, um, or we, or doesn't start a call.
And I don't, I, I don't think that's the case at all, the, the, the totter we have are the information coming from Tyler and the results coming from Tyler. It's, it's, it's not things that we can just program, uh, Josh is a good programmer, there are things that he can help us in communicating, but it's. The programming is on the Tyler's side that, that they've got to fix, but we'll, we'll make him go through it.
I think at this point.
Let's put Josh on, we don't care. Yeah, let's put Josh on it and let's go from there.
And I, I, I do want to be clear and I want to, um, affect whatever we're doing. I'm not against Mr. Katrien, I'm not complaining on Mr. Katrien.
I understand.
There's, it just seems, and I appreciate his help and we have, we've got a good working relationship right now, I don't want to ruin that hurt. Um, but he is, am I incorrect that he is over IT for the entire complex? But he can't if this issue is, is every day off. And that, that's just common sense, I, I need somebody who can.
Do other places have this kind of problem with Tyler?
They do, no, I don't, I don't know a locality that is happy with Tyler Muniz, the ones that are successful with it. Basically either have an IT in their department or they share one with the treasurer or, or similar state of work. For the first seventy months of the year, that this is what you do. Because the issues are always either in program or code or script. Means nothing to me, I know, I've looked at it, I, I do now actually know what that means when it's a script error. But I am not IT program, I, I, I don't know how to fix those issues. I don't know that Tyler knows how to fix those issues, they'd already be fixed.
And, and I think, and I don't remember how long ago it's been, but I think Mr. Barry Rich helped to. Different counties that had, that used the system and, and the best of my recollection that most of the counties that. Did not have problems were larger counties that had a much larger IT staff than three. And, but that still to me does not excuse the lack of response or lack of communication for, for my company. I mean, we can't fix that.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, we shouldn't have to, or no locality should have to have IT people smart enough to go in. And fix problems that their software engineers should be fixing.
Yes, sir.
And it sounds to me like that's what's happened in larger localities. Is their IT people are creating a better mousetrap at no cost to them.
Yep.
Especially when you're paying for that service.
Yeah.
All right, does anybody else have anything for Mr. Linkus? All right, thank you, sir.
Thanks, Alan.
Sheriff Foster, you have anything? Ms. Quinn, I seen you slide in here, we got your financial report, but.
Honestly, sir, I have nothing else outside of the financial report.
Well, I figured you might want to add to what Mr. Linkus said.
Well, I missed some of that because, um, I was talking with Pastor Friger because I had not seen him in a very long time, so we were catching up. And, um, he was telling me a few stories, he may have known about the board chair, so I was intrigued to listen. For a little while longer before I came to the meeting, but, um, if there's anything that. Kind of catching the tail end of Mr. Linkus' discussion with you all that I can add, I'll gladly, um, address that, but I, I think Mr. Linkus is very accurate. Of course, the data comes from his side, but I don't foresee real estate being out by October and it's happening soon, but do they, I really don't. Um, kind of just one issue that I know that I will have from my side. Um, because my understanding is it's been corrected, but it's in a newer version of the system and I don't know. That even in our small updates that we've done, it grew to that newer version. Um, last year, all of the veterans credits, um, both full and partial veterans credits. For real estate, um, the veterans credits for personal property and all the age credits, the Commissioner's office had to put those in manually. And that accounted for about fifteen, sixteen hundred exemptions, if I remember the number correctly. Because my side, there's, you know, uh, going back to Mr. Grant's term or tenure here. You kind of push a button, pull a lever, there's a process that I would go through to apply those. Um, once the Commissioner's office had those entered in and it didn't work. Um, to my knowledge, um, I did get ahold of a tech, a support tech one day when I called, I'm sorry, I found myself, or hear myself.
There's that echo tonight.
Sorry, I'm not sure if I'm talking loud enough or not, but I catched an echo. Um, I did get ahold of a support tech when I called about another issue, so at the time he was. I call him fresh blood, to be honest, because he was somebody I had dealt with before at Muniz. And he was kind enough, he dug and he searched for probably twenty minutes and he told me that this has been fixed, but like I said, it's in a newer version, so if there's an, an issue. And something has to be fixed, it gets fixed in a newer version of the system, so it depends on how frequent we're updating. And I know there has been discussion of trying to update, um. I think it's kind of talked about on a quarterly basis, but then it's also been talked about on an annual basis, but they're constantly pushing updates out because you'll be on a. For example, say, I don't even know what version we're on right now, to be honest, but we might be on a twenty twenty-one version, but you may be on a twenty twenty-one dot three, dot four, dot five version. And there could be fifty more versions to get you to what the latest and greatest is, so. But every time they fix something, it creates a new version and it keeps going, so. Um, kind of circling back through with other localities, um. Bodataut County has Muniz, they went to Muniz after we did, um, the taxes in twenty seventeen. And they have already signed a contract and improved in their budget, they are leaving Muniz as quickly as they can leave. And, um, in talking to the treasurer there, she said two of their, and I don't know how many people in their IT department. Two of those folks basically tie up a hundred percent of their time with the Treasurer's office and the Commissioner's office. And, um, my understanding from a conversation I had last week, um, with someone else, I haven't talked to those offices directly. But I think Rona County and Henry County are looking at leaving Muniz. And Rona County's had it for a very long time, as has, uh, Henry County, actually. And, um, there was another locality, but I cannot remember that one. I know Clark County has, um, left Muniz, they are fully integrated on a new program now. They have fully left and had success in the new program that they, they converted to from Muniz. But, um, seems like a lot of offices are starting to, or especially Treasurer Commissioner's side, in the process of leaving Muniz, just because. It's a great financial system, it's great financially, um, but tax is a little weird and, and, um. And not entirely taking everything away from Muniz, but of course, as with everything, your knowledgeable people retire. Then you have to replace those with new people, so you lose so much knowledge when those people leave and, and our implementation guy that we had from twenty seventeen. Um, he retired during the COVID onset and, um, he was fantastic, because I could call him. And I would say, Jim, I have this problem, I've tried this, this and this, I don't know what else to try. And I would either get a response, well, you've tried everything you can, there's nothing else to do but call support, or have you tried this? And now I kind of just lose out on options because I don't know what else to try. I can call them workarounds all the time, I've done every workaround I can find to work around, but you've got to wait for help back because you can't pick up the phone. And say, um, you know, hey, Mr. Smith, I have this problem, can you help me, you know, as far as calling Muniz, because you have to log a support case. So you either talk to a person, they log the support case for you, or you log into the, their support system and you log the support case and you. Wait for it to go through the avenues, so I do miss the implementation guy very much. Um, he was, um, he'd been with him for a long time, um, but there's a lot of things that's. For me, I, I'll be honest, I've been so many workarounds to work around the problem, I probably could have more direct rounds and things, but I don't know what that direct route is. Because I've just had to go around stuff so much, but, um, so I don't know, I, I'm. I feel like Mr. Linkus is frustrated, but I feel his frustration too, because that's where I've been for a long time.
Yeah, and, and I know you wasn't here long before, Ms. Quinn, but, and we pointed that out, you know, you, you used to write every word you read, you took the blow up. Of our frustration and citizens frustration, uh, on something that you shouldn't have took, uh, with Tyler Muniz. Uh, it may be a great financial tool, and it must be easy to hear you say that.
Financial is good, it's, um, and I, I didn't have access to, um. Not the David system, but.
Sun Guard.
Sun Guard.
Yeah.
Um, to Sun Guard, um, well, and even, I always called it the double D system, I called it the David and David system, which I think, you know, it was my chief David. Um, that worked for Mr. Crockett for a very long time and, and stayed on with me and, and David, our previous IT director, but. Which David had written that program and David knew how to work it, so I always thought of the double D system, it was very basic, very basic, I mean. Kindergarten spiller could operate that one. Sun Guard, I didn't have access to, um, so I don't really know a lot about it, but from my experience in the system I had with the Tampa Bay Retreter, the two systems that I had there. Um, I think the financial side is really great, because it allows you to pull so much data and do so much with it that. Um, you know, my, my previous experience you couldn't do. And, and the tax side is like that as well, I mean, there's a lot we can export out to Excel. But there's a lot of reports you have to export to Excel to get certain data, but then you also have to export it to as a PDF. And then you have to look at it on two screens to get all the data that you need together, just because the PDF, the data that came and exported to Excel, but. It, it has its perks, um, my problem, one of my biggest problems, I just feel like. This sales ramp over sales and I don't know that he knows. Don't entirely say how bad his product is that he's selling, but to a point, that's probably seventy-five percent of what I do. Um, we had a Treasurer's users meeting, we did it online, a meeting a month or so ago. And, um, some of the localities weren't really blessing you because they've made changes to things, but they're making these changes, but they're not coming out. And identifying localities and saying, okay, we're making these changes, you test out these changes to see how they work. They're just making the changes and then saying, here. And it's like you're trying to drive, you're even on the right old square tires because often they've done all this analysis, the square tires is the best thing to, to drive around with. So.
So I know, I know you mentioned, um, you're not aware where the most up to date version.
I, I know we're not on it, it's because, let's be honest, you don't always want to go to the latest and greatest because it's not going to be the best, because there's going to be bugs. I don't know where we're at on some of our versions, um, there's been discussion of updating, but then. It comes down to like so many things, when is it a good time, because, um, for you all in finance department, you're coming off of budget planning. And all of that, um, you're coming in to audit in fiscal year, we're now going into taxes. So when is a good time for an upgrade that you're kind of agreeing?
Yeah, and, and I think you answered your question, I was getting ready to ask, is that our choice not to go to the most updated version?
Yes, yes, yeah, we, 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 uh, and, and, and some of you can go from one to two and, and it's not a whole lot of changes. But when there's a lot of changes, there's a lot of times where we're like, no, let's not go to it now, the, two years ago, it was like a two day ordeal. Because it, and, and basically there was, everybody was sort of in that boat.
Going from, um, what I would technically term is, that basically you pushed an order and served to a cloud-based server, be interested in there. Um, but we hadn't really had any updates since probably twenty seventeen, eighteen, um, prior to Mr. Suthers. Suddenly leaving, um, just because of, you know, everybody, we had that, that lack, that timeframe in there, but then getting the new group on board and getting that familiar. We had to upgrade because there was things that you have to do to, and you have to go to the next version to get to that.
So, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's a good thing.
So, that just strengthens my opinion on we need to look at another software, I get this only two years down the road. But if the treasurer and, and you, Mr. Bayer, and I'm sure Mr. Linkus will probably dig this, if you're. If we're not the update version and we're choosing not to do that because we don't have confidence in what they're doing.
Yeah.
Um, in their systems, that, that system doesn't work, because we need to.
I really would not go to the latest version, and I'm saying that just from discussions I've had with other localities and other peers. But they're like, you know, our locality's gone to this version and it's been awful and we've had to get them to reverse back to this version. And then we've just, you know, went to like the next one up or two up or whatever, but. Like I said, every time they, they fix something, fix a, a bug, it creates another dot something version and it just keeps going, but. Um, Mr. Linkus was talking about scripts earlier, if you recall last year, uh, with the previous Commissioner, Ms. Ball was always talking about patches. Those are the patches that she was referred to with the script, like, like, right, I don't think that they, they have to do that. I've had a few things financially, um, over the last few months, that I knew I wasn't crazy and I called him about it and. The first time I felt like they didn't think I knew what I was talking about, so I spent hours and sent him all these documents and all this stuff and then they came back and were like, oh, yeah, we're aware of that. They wrote a script to fix that, well, I did get notification about a week ago, maybe two weeks ago, that they have fixed whatever that bug is. But that's something that I'll continue to have to pay attention to and be very aware of in my daily work. Until we get to whatever version is.
So I would suggest that we follow suit with, I think you said Bodataut County and Rona County as well.
Bodataut, um, they had new software in their CIP for their budget, so, um, the treasurer, uh, was to have signed the contract right after the first July, once their board. Um, adopted their, um, their budget. And then, um, like I said, I have not spoke directly to the Treasurers, but I was in a conversation with someone else the other day and, and they're, they're pretty. Knowledgeable about what's happening in Bodataut, but they were telling me that Rona County and Henry County, and there was another locality, I can't remember the other one. That are looking at leaving Muniz.
So if we can start that process.
And I think, and what she's talking about, the, the tax module.
Just the tax model, yes, not.
We might look at changing the entire system at some point in time, uh, and, and, and school systems had some discussions about that, financial side worked well. Some think that the school system doesn't work well, the tax package, we said it last year, is not Tyler's strongest package that's out there. Um, and so, yeah, we can go ahead and put out requests for, for proposals on that, get some, some things in, get some input, um, you know. Bedford was one as well, but I don't know if they've made a change yet, but they were.
They're having a lot of problems.
They, they're, they're, they're having some, some issues on the, uh, the tax package, and I think we should go ahead, put it out, get those in, start that conversation. Um, to, to go ahead and look, and, and like I said, it, it will take, we'll see what they tell us how long it is, but it can be a twelve to twenty-four month process of getting that changed over.
And I'll add, Mr. Bayer is very accurate when he says that the tax package is not their strong suit, it really is not, because. He graciously called me back in Maine and said, would you like to go to the Tyler conference and attend? And I looked at the classes, they don't really have sessions that are tailored to like me and Mr. Linkus attending, that it's worth, I feel like the county's time. Of investing the money into us to send us there, because they have a different tax program called IAS Tax World, but that's totally separate from the whole Muniz thing. But it's, um.
Well, as, as far, as far as I've done, it doesn't cost the same thing to, RFPs, so. What, how, do we need to take action?
If y'all want, but you don't have to, we can just go ahead and put out the RFP and, uh, and give them a few weeks to get something back to us.
Anybody have any issues with issue of RFP and see what comes back? Anybody have any issues with issue of RFP and see what comes back?
It's been a long time ago.
All right. Well, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, I appreciate your comment because I've stood up here for two years and I've taken a lot, a lot.
All right. We'll move on to new business. We have the consent calendar, entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Somebody.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry to have a second.
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Burnet. Do a roll call vote, Mr. Burnet. So approved. Next, we have the VDOT pedestrian connection project agreement. Is that?
I would request the board authorize, uh, staff to execute this agreement, for the, uh, transportation alternative for the Fort Chiswell Crosswalk Project.
Right. Entertain motion authorize staff to execute the agreement as presented. So have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Burnet. Do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry. Have the clerk of circuit court, all of it came back good. Do we need to?
I don't think you need to take any action on that, Mr. Chairman.
I couldn't remember if we need to accept that. Next, we have a gov deals auction. This Collins has presented this memo with the results of our latest gov deal auctions. Now entertain a motion to declare the property a surplus and accept bids as presented.
Somebody.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Morton. Is there any questions or discussion on that? There ain't none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved. Anything else under new business, Mr. Bayer?
Uh, no, sir.
Mr. Hankins, do you have anything? We know you need. We'll move on to staff before we have, uh, Deputy County Administrator, Mr. Hankins.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Have several items to take care of tonight. Um, would, uh, ask for some additional payment authorizations. Um, we have, we have received fiscal year twenty-four ATL payments. Uh, that's listed as twenty-five in your, your memo, but it's fiscal year twenty-four payments. Uh, we have attached a staff memo. We're asking that you disperse, um, uh, those payments to each of the four fire departments and to, uh, with county emergency services as listed. And, uh, we'd be glad to answer any questions you have about that.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve the ATL distribution as presented by Mr. Hankins.
Somebody.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Cook. Is there any questions or discussion on that?
Ms. Chairman, we would like to send those checks out this week if possible. We've got some fire departments that are asking for, um, for that too. I do that so it is a pre-authorization to issue the checks.
Okay. Does that change your motion?
No, sir.
All right. Does that leave any questions or discussion? Here now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Burnet.
Uh, second pre-authorization is for our citizen alert system. Uh, we use Everbridge. We have been entertaining, uh, other options. Um, but we are at the end of our, um, our year with, um, Everbridge. Would ask that you authorize payment to be sent out this week and for us to enter into an agreement for one more year with Everbridge. Uh, but would ask that we, um, spend some time during the next year examining the alternatives. There are some, uh, alternatives that appear to be, uh, less expensive and give us better user interfaces for, for staff. But, uh, for the time being, Everbridge is working. We are able to do wireless emergency alerts through that. So would ask that you, uh, allow us to continue and issue payment for that this week.
All right. So entertain a motion to authorize the removal with Everbridge.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Burnet. Is there any questions or discussion on that? Here now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry.
The, uh, third one is for the, uh, Henley Mountain Electric, uh, for the, uh, new, uh, radio tower up there. Um, you all have given us direction to go ahead and proceed with getting power run. We have pricing from, uh, Appalachian Power in the amount of forty thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars and eighty-two cents. Um, we have signed the contract. They have indicated they will send us an invoice this week. And if they do, we would like authorization to go ahead and pay that so we can speed this process along.
All right. Entertain a motion to pre-authorize and issue of that check. Have a motion by Mr. Cook. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Terry. Any questions or discussion on that? Here now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry.
And the, uh, final authorization is a late payment. Uh, Recreation Department Director had a, an invoice on his desk. Uh, the, uh, person who submitted the invoice is selling custom tackle through our, uh, shop at the Rural Retreat Lake. Uh, he has not been paid, uh, for what he has invoiced. I would ask that you authorize staff to do that and accept my assurance that I have, uh, addressed the matter with Parks and Recreation Director.
Thank you for the fire case. All right. Entertain a motion to authorize payment of that invoice.
Somebody.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Burnet. Any questions or discussion on that? All right. We'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Burnet.
Getting out of the payments, um, we are requesting a, uh, budget amendment. Uh, you have a, uh, memo outlining the, uh, the reasons and, and the, uh, the action to be taken. Compensation Board increased the clerk's, uh, clerk of the circuit court's payroll budget. It, it is, uh, an increase that I believe rewards, uh, Mr. Musser's, uh, status as a certified, uh, master clerk. Uh, the, uh, comp board, uh, awards additional pay for that. So, uh, we think that's where the, uh, the issue came from. Uh, but we just ask that you, uh, amend and appropriate, uh, those additional funds to the budget to match the state allocation.
All right. Entertain a motion to amend and appropriate our budget to match the state comp board allocation for the court.
Somebody.
Have a motion by Ms. Lawson by a second. Have a second by Mr. Smith. Any questions or discussion on that? Right here now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Burnet. So approved.
One limit, Ms. Lawson has been waiting for us to, uh, to arrive at. Um, we have put out bids for, um, the two portage points, uh, that, um, are funded by the Virginia Outdoors Foundation grant. Um, the one on Reed Creek and the one at, uh, Miller, or at, uh, Kins Lane and the one at, uh, Miller's Creek. Um, the, the construction will clear the trees and brush, do some grading, uh, put down, uh, gravel for the parking areas and the driveways and prepare the, the site for, for use for, uh, kayakers and canoeers who, uh, want to, uh, uh, put in and take out at those points. Uh, we got three bids on the project, uh, which is better than we've done on some of our projects lately. Um, Litton Landscapes is the apparent low bidder at ninety-six thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars. Uh, the high bid was for a hundred and eight thousand dollars. So they were all fairly close, uh, in terms of, of the bids. We just would point out that, uh, this original grant period was set to expire August second. We are requesting an extension of that time from the Virginia Outdoors Foundation. If we don't get that extension, then we're not going to go ahead with the project apps and coming to you and asking for additional funding. Uh, but, um, uh, with, with the bids at this level, it does mean that some of the things that we intended to include there, like picnic tables and trash cans, some of the other amenities that you would expect around those sites that we're going to have to find other funding for or we'll have to ask you for an appropriation for. But we want to get this work done first before we proceed, uh, on to that point. So, uh, we would ask that, uh, you authorize staff to enter into an agreement, uh, with Litton Landscapes to perform the work as specified in their, uh, bid.
All right. Unless any board member wants to move this to old business and leave it lying. I'll entertain a motion by Ms. Lawson to approve the, uh, contract with Litton Landscapes. Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Terry. Is there any questions or discussion on that? Here now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry. So approved.
We also have a resolution in front of you that's, uh, authorizing an application for grant funding through the With Plan Foundation. Uh, we've identified a couple of projects we'd like to pursue. Uh, the, uh, aging, uh, tennis courts at Ager Park, uh, need some attention and could use some reconstruction and repurposing. Uh, we'd like to, uh, add multipurpose courts if we can because of the growing popularity of pickleball. We think we'd get some more folks out there, uh, using the courts if, if we had some other racket options. Um, and then on the emergency services side, uh, we've talked about, um, uh, doing a community, uh, AED program where we try to get, uh, automatic external defibrillators into, uh, some high-traffic areas where we can, uh, you know, hopefully save somebody's life or at least, uh, helps someone administer aid until, uh, our emergency services folks can, uh, get there. So, um, unless you have other direction on how we should apply for those funds, we would ask that you authorize staff to apply for, uh, the, the grant as spelled out here.
All right. Entertain a motion to approve resolution twenty-four, or twenty twenty-four dash twenty-two. Have a motion by Mr. Cook. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Burnet. Is there any questions or discussion on that? All right. Here now, all in favor?
I'm sorry. Can I ask a quick question? I didn't get one of these up just now, by chance. It's okay. Um, but I mean, just for clarification, does that tie to doing those certain items?
Um, I, I think we've got some latitude in there. If we find that something's not practical, we, we can modify our applications slightly. But, um, generally, we would want to apply for some emergency equipment we wouldn't normally, um, fund in the budget.
Yeah. The reason I was asking just because I really want to put it out to the public just exactly what they're interested in. I have nothing against pickleball and things like that, but I just have heard so many other, you know, opinions. But I didn't, I just didn't know if that ties to just that or if we could still kind of do like a survey type thing like we discussed in the past.
We, we have, uh, based that on, uh, feedback that we've been getting, uh, that, that folks would like to have somewhere to play pickleball. Uh, I think now, uh, some folks are trying to use that, but you've got to change the configuration of the court. I'm not sure if the community college is offering, uh, that or not, but, uh, we're, we're getting feedback. There aren't enough options for people who want to play that to, to go to. Uh, I haven't played it myself, so I don't know how fun it is.
Yeah, but I, I believe WCC does offer it and it's hardly used at all. That's why I was just kind of wondering, you know, if there, if there's maybe a, a better option, but.
Well, um, alternatively, our basketball court is in really rough shape. It does get some use. Um, we could change it to, uh, you know, renovating and updating the courts at Ager Park, um, you know, if, if, if that's the board's direction.
All right. Does anybody else have any questions? Here now, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved.
I just would point out in the, uh, in the report, uh, we did receive our, uh, four hundred and fifty thousand dollar reimbursement from, um, the Department of Rail and Public Transportation for our, uh, rail, uh, at, um, Progress Park, uh, the, the extension out to the Blue Star property. Uh, the seating, uh, update has started at the, uh, Hitachi Energy Arena. Uh, the aluminum was, uh, first load of aluminum was delivered this morning. I believe they, they got two deliveries in today. Uh, so, uh, construction is, uh, underway there. I believe Bobcats have, have shared something on, on their page if, if you're interested in seeing, uh, today's updates. Uh, we did, uh, deliver the, um, air packs to Rural Retreat and, um, Chairman Vaught came out to, uh, uh, to that along with some members of the, uh, Rural Retreat Town Council to, to celebrate, uh, getting that project done. And, uh, Chief Evans with the department shared a, a letter with, uh, Chairman Vaught, uh, indicating his thanks, uh, to the board for, uh, providing that, that support. We had a, uh, field trip, uh, last week. We had, uh, five government students from With and Grayson Counties who, uh, came and, uh, spent the morning with me last Tuesday. We, we learned about government. It's, it's probably more than they wanted to learn, but, um, they, they got to drink from the water hose for about three hours and go back and decide that they don't want careers in local government. The Regional Improvement Commission, we got notification today from, uh, our treasurer. Uh, she has deposited the, um, fourth quarter, um, payment into the, um, account. And just preliminary indications are we'll, um, be distributed somewhere seven hundred and ten, seven hundred and twelve thousand out of that to go toward our public safety effort. So it, it's slightly above where we budgeted, but it's in, uh, in the neighborhood. And those funds should be dispersed in, uh, late July or early September. Then the last thing I would, would ask, was anyone going to mention the funeral we're having tomorrow? If so, I'll let you mention that during board time.
I was going to, we go ahead.
Uh, Donnie Widener, uh, with, uh, the Ivanhoe Fire Department, who also was a member of the, uh, Lead Mines Rescue Squad and some of the other, uh, agencies here, uh, passed away, uh, a couple of days ago. And the funeral is tomorrow. They, they have, um, uh, set up lineups for departments who are coming in, uh, to, to show their support, uh, uh, as the funeral procession goes out. So, um, I know some of us will, will be there or around there as we, we help with the effort. So just, uh, keep that family in your prayers. Be glad to answer any questions if I haven't covered anything.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Hankins? All right. We'll move on to County Administrator report. Then, Mr. Bayer, if you don't mind, the first year of action items, I'm conflicted out. So I'm going to turn the lead over to Mr. Cook to Steve myself.
Mr. Cook, the, uh, first item on the agenda is the sheriff's office has received another, uh, grant. Uh, Sheriff Foster and Chief Deputy Klein have been very successful recently on their grant applications. I would request you all authorize operation ceasefire grant in the amount of one seventy-nine, six thirty-four.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion by a second.
Somebody.
Second. Have a motion, a second. Any discussion? No discussion. Do, let's see. Do we, we don't have to do a roll call on this, do we?
Uh, y'all go to a roll call. Yes.
All right. Mr. Terry?
Um, and then on page one fifty-six, uh, following all the grant information is the, um, request for amendment and appropriation of this grant and other grants the sheriff has received. So I'd request y'all amend and appropriate one hundred and forty-five, four hundred to police supplies and one hundred thousand to overtime.
Entertain a motion by a second.
Somebody.
Second. Have a motion, a second. Any discussion? No discussion. Do a roll call vote, Mr. Burnet. Motion carries.
And, and I will mention on police supplies, Chief Deputy Klein contacted me, uh, yesterday. One of their concerns is you have to, to buy the police supplies and then get reimbursed. So, uh, right now, they're waiting on about a two hundred thousand dollar reimbursement, I believe, on their ARPA grant to come in, which will help, uh, reimburse their, their police activity fund. Um, if we get that back in, we should have enough. But if we get down to where we are completing the police activity fund, then what I request is we'll, we'll transfer funds over from the general fund to cover it until we get the, the reimbursement back from the police act, from the, the grant to reimburse the police activity fund. So we'll continue monitoring that and see, uh, how that goes. Um, I would ask you allow one other item that is not on the agenda. Well, uh, just information, the Virginia housing, uh, I've, I've got in there for informational package. If there's any comments we want to, uh, make. But this is for, uh, a project that, um, I still call them hope and that's not the correct term, Open Door, um, is doing on Monroe Street, uh, in Withfield. Um, if there are any con, comments that you all would like submitted or if you all want to submit directly, uh, feel free to let me know. But I've included that in there for informational purposes. The other item is, I hand it out to you. DEQ has provided us with notification, uh, that they have declared a drought warning. Um, as you can see, it's, it's covering. Um, as you can see, it's, it's covering large swaths of Virginia. You've got the, the southwest, the far southwest Virginia, Lee Wad, the Cannon, uh, but also all of the, the New River, uh, area as well, well as central and, and northern Virginia and some of those areas. Um, they have a drought, uh, I guess, uh, it's not warning, but advisory, then a drought warning and then a drought emergency. So they have, this is, that's second level of, of what they have put out there. We have a drought ordinance that I handed out to you, was adopted in two thousand and ten. And basically we have the same as well. We have a drought watch at, uh, six point one A is a drought watch, six point one B is a drought warning and six point one C is a drought emergency. Um, this states that the With County Administrator is designated, is authorized to declare a water emergency in With County, uh, restricting the use of water in any area of the county. For a warning, um, it's voluntary water conservation actions due to the imminent onset of significant drought event. Uh, asked to reduce outdoor water use, only using water before ten AM and after seven PM, reducing turf watering, um, not washing your driveway off, reducing vehicle washing, um, using bucket watering and recycle water, uh, not using, uh, fountains and, and then it's got to reduce indoor water use. Um, just want to share with you all, it is very dry out there, continues to be dry out there. I think state is taking this as a preemptive, going into where they think it could be going this fall if we don't get additional rain. Um, just want to get some board input and see if you all are, uh, in agreement with going to the same level of a drought warning, uh, that DEQ has gone to for our area.
I do have one question, if I may. Uh, I had someone reach out to me last week, had some concerns about a water pump, if you will, been dropped into water at Cripple Creek at High Rocks. That has watered a farm, multiple farms for a farmer on that end of the county and sucking Cripple Creek pretty dry. Something that's maybe something we need to look into.
That's technically allowed, isn't it? Because I, I have the same issue with Creek Creek area, with the farmer on that side.
Yeah, I don't think that's needed for them to do it, I don't believe.
Yeah, I, we typically refer those into DEQ for making certain if it's agricultural or if they need to have a withdrawal permit in the process. So, uh, you say it's on High Bridge in, I mean.
High Rocks.
High Rocks.
High Rocks. And supposedly it's what, uh, it's not your typical water pump. I mean, what, what I've been told, and I haven't seen it, but what I've been told by more than one source is it's producing water that makes the, that, that's huge. I mean, it's, there's multiple pumps, that's what I've been told.
And so it's between the Creek Bridge and Ninety-four, uh, Portage Crossroads?
Yes.
In the mouth of the rivers where the High Rocks.
Yes, sir.
So it's at the back of the Watts Farm?
Thank you, Mr. Smith, I couldn't remember the farm name.
Uh, and to Ms. Lawson's point, I got a call about, uh, Reed Creek, the same issue Mr. Terry's talking about, but Reed Creek behind, uh, Lane. From there to Mike Smith's.
There's a lot of pumps there.
There's a lot of pumps there.
I brought this up a few years ago and I was told because it was agriculture, that there's nothing that can be done. This definitely is something to look into because it's allowed.
Yeah.
What are your thoughts?
Be glad to look into it, but make certain that whoever's going to follow the proceedings.
We're going to limit our, our residents.
Yeah.
On using water, that's what we're looking for.
So, any objection to matching the state and going to a, a drought warning?
Well, I mean, I think at, at this point, it's more educational than it is.
It is.
It's not punitive, it's just trying to educate the public.
Before it gets worse. It couldn't hurt.
I just, I felt like there's been times that we've been dry that we haven't gone with it. And I just don't know if it's weather forecast or what the state's looking at. I mean, it, it's, it's dry, not, not done out crops. Um, when I was at a VACO meeting two weeks ago, the, uh, Secretary of Agriculture was there talking and he was talking about the, um, you know, the crop reports and the loss of crops in different areas and, and limited hay cutting and all that. So was, was sort of glad to see the state has gone ahead and, and taking this. And we'll put this out and use our public information officer to share information about it. And we want to clear a, a drought warning for With County.
I know it created hardship on Mr. Smith's vehicle wash.
All the good work washes.
All right, anything else, Mr. Barrett?
Uh, no, sir.
County attorney, Mr. Farthing, do you have anything for?
I do have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to board and board. Uh, Mr. Terry, we'll start with you.
Uh, I was going to talk about the water situation and one additional thing. Mr. Barrett, I think maybe we need some type of communication from the convenience centers to our citizens that's dropping stuff off. There's been some confusion about tires. People are not aware that we have tire disposal down on Kins Lane. And I don't know that, maybe the tenants don't know, but I had a call today about that. And, um, okay. Also something about, somebody called me last week about shrubs. They had a small amount of shrubs and some, some leaves, um, waste product to throw away. And they were denied at one location and went to the other location and that, that location took it. It was a tune in in the Fort Chiswell area.
Okay.
So maybe, I just think maybe we need some kind of communication out there just to kind of clarify the people with the new transfer. But that's all I've got, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And, and I will just add to what you're saying, or the, uh, everything we have heard and the board members heard, the tire disposal at, um, the JPSA has worked out really well. Uh, he's getting a lot of outside tires coming in from other places. Uh, it's, it's, uh, it's been a good, good move by the JPSA to invest in that.
Now, the one thing I tired of, I have been approached about, probably a couple of guys that have doodles.
Yeah.
And they don't think it's, they don't think it's fair that they, uh, that they have to, uh, everybody can get rid of four, but they got, they got six on their vehicles, so I'd be, I'd be of no attention if that did.
I, I agree, and technically it's four. The only good news is we at least do have a thing they can take it down to the transfer station now and, and dispose of them there. They relatively low cost, but it is a cost.
All right, Mr. Lord?
I've got a couple of things. Uh, first of all, bids came in on the bridge over Cripple Creek, the one better. And it was under the engineer's estimate, so it's, they're going to award. Always, so September, always from September, by the end of September, you should be seeing some, some more down there. The library committee, uh, that I'm on, uh, is worried about the agreement between With County and Grayson County. Is that anywhere close to getting?
It is, yes.
Okay. But we want to make sure of that because the, the budget depends on middle agreement, over agreement, whatever. And I got a call from, uh, citizens down in Spiegel, they're asking for, uh, some caution lights or something there at the intersection of Twenty-one and St. Peter's Road. I don't know if we've ever looked at that before, but they said people were flying through there. And I'm just afraid somebody's going to get hurt. So, I don't know, they got, I guess they'll do a stage on that. And then I already talked to you, uh, very long. It's all I have, thank you.
All right, Mr. Smith?
I just have two things, Mr. Chairman. Uh, one, Mr. Barrett, since we were talking about the drought, I know that we had talked, um, uh, during the water committee and then a couple of meetings, but maybe about the overrun, uh, and that area getting watered down in there. So we, I know with the drought, people's wells are starting to act up, so they are interested in water. So if we can, uh, we can talk about that during the water committee, maybe. Uh, if you can just make sure to remind me to bring that up. Uh, and then the second thing, I know we've talked about this several times before too, Smith Drive, I continue to get calls from people on Smith Drive. And I know that, uh, the initial entrance was an issue with the DOD, uh, because of the grain there. And if we can look at the, I'll, I'll turn it around on the backside, if there's anything we can do with those residents.
All right.
That's all I've got, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Cook?
I have nothing.
Ms. Lawson?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, um, Mr. Barrett, Mr. Hankins, I'm not sure who to ask this question to, but, um, thank you, Mr. Barrett. But Withers Park, can someone give me some type of clarification on the ownership of Withers Park? I know that there's some issues between the school and the town. And the reason I'm asking this in a public meeting and said, just ask them one of you later, is because a lot of people are confused about it, it seems. So, is that something, is there a short answer to that?
I, I'll give you my understanding, while Mr. Barrett's trying to adjust the sound. Uh, it's my understanding that it was, uh, school property that, um, was leased to the town. Uh, it's also my understanding, and it's got made refresh my memory, that, uh, that surplus property has now been surrendered back to the county. So we are technically the landlord, is that, is that where we stand?
I remember when it got, uh, sent back to, or given back to.
Okay, I'm sorry. My question was, and if this is a, if this is a long answer, we can always discuss it later, but a lot of people are confused about Withers, Withers Park. Who, who owns it? The county, the town?
The county owns it, the town has a lease on that property.
Okay.
I do believe the school board was it two years ago or so that transferred it back to the county that it was unused property. But county owns it, there's a lease that the town has.
Okay, so the bleachers coming down, is that all through the town?
The, the, the property that's, the bleachers are all,
Is that the?
Was part of the block that the old county jail.
Okay.
So that piece is entirely owned by the, well, that piece is owned by the town, but I guess, but, I think it was before our town, the county declared that property a surplus and gave it to the town.
Uh, and there, there was basically, um, I, I, I pulled up and looked at it, but basically the, the, the town was, conveyed that property before they destroyed, before they took it down to jail. I think it required them to like have a public hearing or input on it. But, uh, the bleachers were on that property. I can see if I can find that.
Well, you don't have to do it right now. I just, just let me know sometime.
Okay.
I've got a nonprofit that reached out to me that, um, is interested in doing a few things around Withers Park area. And, and I just don't, I, I told him I would have to find out. It's, I thought that the town leased it, but I wasn't exactly sure. And to be honest with you, I'm not really sure what the town knows either, so it's kind of like they're getting a lot of back and forth. So, yeah, I appreciate any info, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Burr?
I got a few, uh, I'm, Mr. Barrett, I sent you an email from a Bobby Dean, about nine one one address. And, uh, I mean, so if you reach out, and there's that, uh, two more we can do about that. Um, the state ready, uh, farm room, uh, six eighty-eight, we have a drop farm room sign on it. I don't know what people are. They got that scared and put that.
Uh, that's actually our staff and I will check with them. They, they, they had ordered a bunch of signs. I do not know if they've come in yet to get those up and I will check with them and say.
And then the last five years, I'm, uh, really love, it was moving the grant off. I didn't know that the county had a resource that helped in moving the grants. And that's all.
All right, thank you. Um, I've just got a couple of things, uh, a couple of things. This weekend is Harriet's Day in the retreat, uh, if you want to come out, um, Saturday. Um, Mr. Barrett, uh, myself and Mr. Smith have been talking to Mr. Barrett about children play signs. Um, we've had some, um, valid requests and, and I would just ask that, um, that even be referred to the budget committee or viewers and grounds, whichever way you prefer, um, to just keep the discussion going of what type of stipulations we want to put on those, to how to go about it. And for the ones that don't know, DOD does not provide those signs, that falls on the town. And historically, um, people that have requested, um, the county, With County has, has made the citizens pay for the signs. There were seven.
Seven hundred and some dollars, I believe, sir.
For the signs. And, and I personally, you know, I think we need to have some type of guidelines of how they get approved. You can, Mr. Barrett, Red Shepherd, some different counties and it's all over the place. Some places they make the citizens pay, some places don't mess with them at all. Some people pay for them, yeah. The, you know, the, the one request that I got was, um, the retreat Lake Road was cut off of Cedar Springs Road. Of course, you know, in the summertime, they see an increase in, in traffic. And the majority of those people live on extra street, which if you get through there, they don't have real large setbacks for the road. Most of them have small kids and small animals. And we requested DOD do a speed study because it's unmarked. And I agree with Mr. Barrett, I seem to think at one time it marked thirty-five, but it's unmarked, so legally it's fifty-five because it's a surplus street, right? Anyway, I'd just like to have a discussion, um, of, of coming up with some procedure on those signs. Last name, Mr. Um, Hankins, Cook, uh, talking about the passive, Donnie Widener. I don't know of anybody that didn't know Donnie, he was the first paramedic in With County. He's been his whole life, ever since I've known him, you know, working in EMS, uh, volunteering with EMS, volunteering with fire cartwheels. Um, he had dealt with kidney disease for several years. And even dealing with that, he still found, you know, he was an instructor, he probably had every type of cert- certificate that you can get. But, you know, he still devoted, volunteered his time to help people. Um, I know we have that, or we're part of that law of honor or whatever it's called, that is in Withers Park. And I believe Ms. Lawson, are you still that boy? Um, I personally think, um, he would be an excellent addition. And, and I'm not sure what the procedure is, I remember there's an application that you fill out, but, you know, I think is, because he literally from the retreat to Barren Springs and all the places in the twin.
Yep.
He covered With County.
Yeah, I can vouch for him. He done it, but all of his life, because I graduated from Mr. Widener. And the whole time through high school, that's all it was about, was his dedication to what he provided to With County. Uh, and you take somebody that started that as a, a young teenager in high school, that most teenagers don't know where they want to go in life. And he, he started at the end and was doing it to the, to the day.
And unfortunately, it, 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 as it seems to be the case in a lot of towns, this is one of the things that we probably shouldn't talk about. That's why he was still adhered into it and, you know, um, he, he definitely created a legacy in With County. And I think his name on that monument, um, would give his children and his grandchildren, generations to come something in the back of. It seems like it's, you know. Like I said, I'm not sure what the process is, I don't rise to work.
Yeah, it is an application process. And, um, basically, I, if anyone appears, I would do it, but I don't know all, I was a friend of his, but I don't know all of his accomplishments. So it's really good to get an application that's got all that on there so the other board members can also, or the committee members can also read that. And then, um, I believe it's probably not till next January or February that we vote on that again, but I'll have to go back and look. But he is the perfect. But he is the perfect citizen for that law. That's exactly what that law was meant for.
Absolutely. And I have to, Mr. Farne will leave. Mr. Hankins, will you talk to Chuck and maybe have him start reaching out and getting us some information soon?
Yes, sir. I believe Mr. Farne is one of the pallbearers tomorrow, so he knows quite a bit already and would have the resources to be able to pull that together.
All right, that's all I have. The next item on the agenda is closed meeting. Are we doing both of them? I'll see.
If, if you all want to.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I would also ask A5, Perspective Industry Project Rome, if you all would, A5, Project Rome.
All right, in a motion, we're in a closed session on 2.237, Level 8, eight consultation with community council, Mount Robbins Community Services, and meeting requirements. And JCR Sony and Section 2.237, Level 85, Perspective Industry Project Rome.
Sony.
Second, have a motion by Mr. Terry, second by Mr. Cook. All those are favor, senior five, saying hi.
Uh.
Any opposed? We're now in closed session.
Whereas With County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this state pursuit and affirmative recorded vote. And in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the With County Board of Supervisors and such a meeting must conduct in conformity with the Virginia law. Now therefore being resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting, to which a certification resolution applies. And only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convened in this closed meeting were heard, discussed, and are considered by the With County Board of Supervisors. And I'll make that a motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right, have a motion by Mr. Terry, I have a second.
None.
Hear none, do a roll call vote, Mr. Barrett?
Uh.
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 So approve. Mr. Hankins, you have anything else to come forward?
Just a reminder of the Asia Playground ribbon cutting tomorrow afternoon between four and five. You can throw an elbow, get in there, get some of the gilly shaved ice. I think one of the area churches has offered to come and do some hot dogs and that sort of thing. So we didn't turn them down. So looking forward to having a full playground up there tomorrow.
The actual ribbon cutting's 4:30 there, right?
In that neighborhood, With Land Foundation, there was a meeting at three, so as soon as they get done, they're.
Mr. Barrett, you give me a thing?
No, I, I think the microphone issue, I think there's been some work trying to improve the volume on some mics for video recording of it. And that's all I think. Just the problem is Donald doesn't have the ability to just leave the hole there. His weight doesn't, that's what it's just not staying. I think she's trying to improve the audio.
So the two mics to the left over there.
Yep.
So anyway, just letting you know, hopefully we get the video quality improved without buzzing us out in here.
All right, Mr. Farthing, you have anything else? Mr. Collins? All right, hear nothing else to come forward, board, you be a adjourned.